Our March 14, 2019 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, we were supposed to have our invocation led by a young man, Mark Scott, but he has not made it. But it's always wonderful when you look out in the crowd and you see your good friend, Pastor Bob Gray, in the audience. And I know I can ask Pastor Gray to please come forward from Longview Baptist Temple and give us our invocation. Please rise. Thank you, Pastor.
I've been brought into the kingdom for such a time as this.
He always answers the call.
Always. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you and praise you for a city that we can live in. We thank you for men and women who have felt the call to leadership and have given their time and given their expertise to help lead our city. We ask for your blessings upon each and every citizen. I pray to bless tonight in the council meeting. Give everybody your grace, your wisdom, and Lord, just please, watch over our city. Thank you for this fine country we live in. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
And let's pledge, please. Ready? Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. On the fly. Because they asked me, are you going to give the invocation? I was like, sure. And then I looked up, I saw Pastor Gray, I said, nope, not about to. Not about to. No, no. Okay. Tonight, in employee recognition, we're going to recognize the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center, the social media team. Tonight, we recognize the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center, the staff that utilize social media to promote their services. Since the facility opened a couple of years ago, social media has played a big role in gaining awareness and increasing adoptions. Recently, a social media post with a bachelorette theme received huge response and was even featured on Good Morning America and several other news outlets. And then, the dancing lamb video happened. A lamb named Ursula, who belongs to one of the veterinarian techs, was visiting the shelter one day. Here we go. So, someone decided to record this animal dancing with the staff. Since the video was originally posted two weeks ago, the video has been viewed by almost 10 million people, has been featured on various news networks, CBS, ABC, Fox News, People Magazine, and many more media outlets, even internationally. So, as a result, Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center's Facebook page increased by 7,000 likes and has increased a 42,000 views on Instagram. So, obviously, we have Nina Allen and Jenna Holloway up here from the Animal Care and Adoption Center. And let me just come up here. Just want to say thank you for what y'all do. You know, it's pretty cool when, okay, this generation, that's nothing to them. They can do that video on Facebook and Twitter and those kind of things. My generation doesn't do that as well. But when you put us on the map like that, it's so wonderful to see that because it's good for Longview. It gives us a little niche, a name, and, you know, people love to see happy videos like that. Y'all do such a great job, the Animal Adoption Center, and so, keep up the good work, keep having fun, keep doing things that just kind of let your hair down a little bit. It's really great. So, thank y'all both so much for what you do. Appreciate you so much. What a pleasure. Thank y'all so much. Y'all are awesome. And nobody would sprang an ankle doing that either, right?
Not yet, but maybe sometime.
Thank y'all so very much. We normally have a community recognition at each council meeting, but tonight I don't have one because my community recognition person doesn't know it, but they're out of town on spring break. So, I'll have to do it another time when they're back in town. But spring break's a hard week to get people here, so we understand that we'll move on. I'm just a citizen and comment. I have a couple of speaker cards. Brian Dodson.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time, Mayor and Council. Brian Dodson at 212 Sherwood Drive. I've been leading the skate park for Longview effort this past year, and we currently have 24,000 of $80,000 raised needed to provide a safe designated skate park for the community of Longview. The most question I get asked while raising funds is why is the city not paying for it? I want to publicly ask for the city to assist in paying for the skate park today. I want to fill in our city's leadership on the importance of the skate park from a public safety standpoint, which I know y'all take very seriously. This is the one main absolute reason why Longview must build a skate park as soon as possible. What I'm going to say is going to be harsh, but please don't just think about it. Take it to the bottom of your hearts. Let it sink in. Kids get killed in cities our size all over America that do not have public skate parks. This happens when somebody is skateboarding or VMAX riding on the side of the street, falls in the road, and gets killed by a bretro. Not a pretty sight. No one wants that call. A young life taken, a family destroyed, a community left shocked and grieving. And the worst part, it's almost preventable by having a safe designated public skate park. It's the sad reality that we will have to accept and take responsibility for by living in a city our size without a public skate park for our youth and all older age groups, including myself. There are way too many memorial skate parks dedicated to these young lives being lost across America and at least seven in Texas, which means it took someone getting killed in these cities for them to take their safety seriously, and then they decided to build a skate park when it was too late. The closest one to us is Malakoff. Malakoff barely has 2,000 people, and they have a memorial skate park. Longview is better in this, and we cannot let that happen here. We have been flirting with this outcome for too long in Longview, and it's time to secure the safety of everyone in our area who enjoys these action sports, especially my little Somebody's going to run them over, I'm telling you. These kids equally deserve a place to go just as much as the kids who play these ball sports that we do financially support. At the end of the day, they're all the same kids, and they're just trying to have fun. They just want to play. I'm sure everyone in this room holds a higher value to human life than just $80,000, right? Would y'all agree? If you truly believe this, you'll help get this park built to help prevent from someone getting hurt or even killed. I'm just asking for the city to just pay for half of the skate park. Only $40,000 to possibly save a life is not much, especially when it applies to entire community. 140,000 people if we include everyone who lives off of Longview, everyone around us. It's just money, and human life is just simply more valuable, I promise. This is a great opportunity to display the saying we use around here, "One Longview." I really do believe in that, I promise. It's time we come together as one Longview and make this long overdue safety necessity a reality for Longview. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bob Metzler.
Mayor and Council, could I be available during the discussion item number 11? That's why I'm here.
Okay. I have no other comment cards. Would anyone like to fill out a comment card and speak at this time? Very well. Presentation item. Presentation from Connect Longview Program of the City of Longview Code Compliance Division, Ms. Self.
Good evening, Council, and Mayor Mack, and Mr. Bonds. Thank you for the opportunity to spend just a few minutes telling you tonight about a program we're very excited about called Connect Longview. We went all the way to the end. I don't know how that happened. As you know, we have a code compliance division in the city that responds to and investigates complaints against properties for various violations, including junk and litter, high grass and weeds, property maintenance issues, sewer violations, et cetera. Periodically, during the investigations, our compliance officers will encounter a citizen that has every desire to clean up their property. They just don't have the physical means or the financial means to do it themselves. In those cases, for years, our compassionate officers have reached out to volunteer groups. They've reached out to other nonprofits, trying to find ways to help that citizen. Similarly, we've had elected officials do the same. When a constituent has come to them in their district and looking for help, they put volunteer groups together and scheduled workdays. The two pictures here, and I apologize for the poor quality, but the picture on the left is a group of volunteers from Mr. Cooper, and these are real life examples of projects that have happened in the last couple of years. They came out on a very bitterly cold New Year's Eve morning and helped a lady who was elderly. She had a number of different health issues. She was recently widowed, and her husband had, over the years, kind of accumulated junk in the backyard, and had piled up to the point where she just physically had no way and emotionally couldn't handle how to deal with that. We put her in contact with this group that they had called us, looking for ways that they could volunteer in the community. We connected the two, and not only did they show up with trucks and trailers and haul all the junk and litter off, but they addressed some of the issues with her soffit and siding and some of the property maintenance issues she experienced as well. The second photo, Councilwoman Ishihara probably recognizes that group. This is one of several that she organized in her district. This occurred on a very busy street and very, very high-profile street. The house, or the brush in the front of the house was so overgrown, you really couldn't even see the house from the street. So, this group came in, cleaned up, and I wish the picture hadn't cropped on the right because the number of bags, it was incredible.
The Queen was really happy with this.
Yes. So, Connect Longview, what we're proposing here is really just to formalize this work that has already been done and has been done for several years. The program is designed to connect citizens in need with volunteers and those citizens that cannot do the work themselves. So, the City of Longview's role in this will be basically as a referral or a connecting agency. We will identify the recipients, and then, of course, at the end of the process, we will be going out and doing a final inspection to make sure everything's in compliance. We will also be working on finding sustainable solutions. So, on those instances where we have a high grass and weeds complaint, and we have volunteers go out and mow, we want to make sure that, we know the grass is going to grow again, so we want to make sure that we work with that citizen and possibly their neighbors or other groups to find a way that that can be dealt with in a more permanent way. The good news is, say for a little bit of staff time, there's no cost associated with this program we're proposing. So, again, we are formalizing things we've been doing for years. We have created, or working on creating, a database. We hope to get that database in the form where it is so detailed that we can very quickly dispatch the right group to the right problem. We are creating forms and waivers. We have a system for evaluating the applicants. We have a committee, which is comprised of eight different employees from six different departments, that will be evaluating each applicant on a case-by-case basis. And then, of course, we will be working, finding ways to sustain the program. We hope to go to a lot of the National Night Out parties to promote the Connect Longview program, work with homeowner associations, and crime watch groups. Some of the volunteer opportunities that program promotes is mowing, trimming, edging, cleanup of junk and litter, some minor property maintenance, like soffit repair, fence repair, tree removal for downed trees. We get a lot of complaints about downed trees. They're unsightly, but also they can harbor rats and snakes and other rodents. So, we get a lot of those complaints, and that can be a very expensive thing to try to clean up if you don't have the funds to do it. Minor demolition projects, maybe a fence that's half fallen down or a shed, things that you can disassemble fairly easily with volunteer labor. Roof replacements, electrical plumbing issues. Now, these require licensed professionals, of course, but in any other time we've had a volunteer program, we've always experienced a preponderance of support from the development community. So, we have tradespeople that I know would be glad to jump in and help. And then, last but not least, we have moving assistance after a fire or displacement event. And this is something we added after something that happened last Christmas. And, let me go to the next. Hang on. Oh, there he is. Okay. If you look at the middle photo, you probably recognize Councilman Wright. 10 days before Christmas, we got a call from one of the par officers who was working with a lady who lived on a second-floor apartment. The apartment below her had burned, but she had COPD and a lot of other health issues, and she was impacted, and it was exacerbating all of her health symptoms to live above the smoked-out apartment. So, they found her in another apartment, but she had no way to move. She could barely get around herself. So, I put out a call to one of civic organizations. We had overwhelming support, showed up in a situation that, for her, she had been desperate and worried about for days. We settled it in a matter of an hour. We had just enough people to get all the stuff moved out and get her moved into her new place. So, here's our committee, and a lot of these folks came tonight. This is kind of a cross-section of the different departments. They represent a lot of the departments that work with the Problem Properties Team, which is a code-hosted meeting that we have once a month, where we identify properties and look at it from different angles and collaborate on solutions for these properties. I wanted to speak real quickly about some of our community partners. Of course, this is not a comprehensive list. There's a pretty large database, but some that I really wanted to highlight tonight. Keep Longview Beautiful. Of course, that's kind of an obvious link where we fit well into what their mission is. We are going to be working with them on a couple of workdays that coincide with the Longview Green and Clean Days. So, twice a year, we'll have more, rather than just do all ad hoc, you know, as things come in, as needs arise, we will try to have two more organized workdays. They also have supported code compliance with community improvement grants, so we're already working pretty closely with them. North Texas Habitat for Humanity and United Way. We met with both these executive directors just to make sure that we weren't overlapping too much in either services or duplicating efforts. We left those meetings agreeing that more is better, that there is a little bit of overlap, but there's enough differences where there are gaps, and that we hope that our programs will fill each other's gaps. Reborn to Serve. You met Pastor Gray. He's here as part of that program. This is a youth ministry, outreach ministry through Longview Baptist Temple, and they have as many as 100 youth ready to serve pretty much every Saturday. So, we know we're going to be utilizing them quite a bit. Dakota Mice with Longview Lawn and Garden approached KLB about wanting to basically serve as a volunteer coordinator, so that if there was somebody that had high grass or had an issue and they couldn't resolve it, that he would use his position in his business to be able to coordinate mowing contractors to take care of those. So, I think they're going to be also another huge partner. And then, of course, Rotary Clubs, you know, they're always very reliable. United Methodist Army comes through several times, well, not several times a year, but once every few years, they come through and they do anywhere from 10 to 70 roofs in the community. And Mr. Cooper, they are interested in doing more projects. So, our official kickoff is going to be at Lear Park in conjunction with Longview Green and Clean on April 13. We're going to have a booth or a table out there, so we'll be handing out information. Between now and then, if anybody's interested in volunteering, we have a webpage set up. We have an email address. Contact me at Development Services or come out on Longview Green and Clean Day and get the information there. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any question, Ms. Self.
I would just like to make a comment. Do you have a question?
This doesn't include any commercial stuff, does it?
No. This is mostly just residential.
Yeah. I just wanted to make a comment that I am so excited to see this progress to the point of being able to present it to council and have a coordinated program. I've been just so pleased and proud of the progress that that has made over the last couple of years with Problem Properties, looking at dilapidated and abandoned buildings, and really progressing through that to make our city more beautiful. And then, now we're to the step where we're looking for people in our community that we can help. Because in Longview, what we have is an overwhelming amount of people that love and want to help their neighbor, and I would be contacted by people who want to do something, but I wouldn't necessarily have projects that I could list off. But we know that there are projects out there. So, being that hub, I think, is really exciting. So, I would ask, let's say that I had a group that would want to do volunteer stuff in the future. Would you tell me what I should do? Like, we have a mission group at our church that looks for projects to get involved in. Should I contact you now? What do I need to do to be involved?
I would say sooner is better, and I would reach out to either the email address or give me a call at Development Services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, just wanted to make a comment as well.
Ingrid, thank you so much, because I know that this type of program will be very beneficial to the citizens, and especially in my districts. Thank you. Hats off.
Thank you.
What I don't think people tend to realize is that, you know, we, as a council, we struggle every year trying to spread our budget out for doing this very thing in various neighborhoods, because we don't have a huge budget to do that. But we have an overwhelming number of volunteers willing to help the community of Longview. It's as if they're giving us money to do that. And, you know, thank you to all the individuals, Pastor Gray, everyone out there. I see Donna with United Way. Everyone who's involved with these organizations that are willing to put volunteerism to work for our community, that's what this community's all about. And the young man, Mr. Dodson, you know, he made the comment. One Longview. We are one Longview. And that really just stresses how important it is for us to help our neighbors. So, I appreciate the effort, Ingrid. I appreciate everyone that's involved with this, because this can really, it's got such potential to teach our youth how to have responsibility and to do something for other people at this young age, where if you start as a young person doing that, it'll carry you all through your life doing that. And so, I think that's the biggest key to this, is getting those youth involved and adults as well. But, you know, thank you all you all, and I look forward to this really becoming a great program for the community.
Thank you.
We're now at a public safety update. Chief Bishop. Chief, you know that Chief Stillman's not here tonight, so you can rail on him all you want to.
Yeah, he told me that. He said, "Feel free." I said, "It probably will take me about 30 minutes."
It's not as funny he's not here, though, is it?
Yeah. Mayor, Council, Mr. Bonds, we've had a few things going on since I've last updated you. This last Monday, we graduated our fourth teen academy that we've had. This is a great program that gives us the opportunity to spend several weeks with our youth and kind of educate them a little bit about the police department and some of the things that we do and why we do some of the things that we do. And plus, what we're seeing is we're getting some encouragement from the kids that they might be interested in a career in law enforcement. So, this has been a good program that we started. We've completed our fourth one and graduated this class on Monday night, and we had 31 students in the class that participated throughout the whole academy and graduated from the teen academy. So, I want to thank the youth that took their time to come and participate with us and learn a little bit more about the police department and why we do some of the things that we do. Also, this last week, we commissioned our newest officer to the force, Elysio Rodriguez. I want to congratulate him. He's now going to begin his field training program, and with this commissioning ceremony, this brings us down to only three vacancies within the department. We also had a few promotions. We promoted Officer Ryan Rocket to sergeant and Officer Kendrick Montgomery to sergeant as well, and Sergeant Rebecca Martinez to lieutenant. And they are now being placed in their official supervisory roles within the department, and I look forward to working with them, with their leadership and their new positions within the department. I'd like to give a shout out to Reverend J.D. Palmer at Mount Isle of Baptist Church, and I want to throw the fire chief's thanks in there, too. Last week, they hosted a lunch for public safety for police and fire and gave us a little time to go down and spend time with the pastor and congregation, members of the congregation, and want them to know how much we appreciate their support and having us down to fellowship. At lunchtime, it was a great time. And then, this Saturday, it's on. Game on. I'm sure there might be some video that'll go viral, but I don't know that it'll be 10 million hits on it. But this Saturday, we'll square off against the fire department at Laterno University at 3:00 PM at Solheim Arena. Free admission, and it's a fundraising event for the athletic department there at Laterno. Councilman Wade kind of indicated that he might show up as a guest player, so we might have to maybe give him a blue jersey to wear.
You better get him on your team, chief. I've seen this guy play. You want him. I promise.
Well, then, he's definitely getting a blue jersey. Also, this coming Tuesday, the Longview Police Department, in partnership with Partners in Prevention and the Coalition for a Drug-Free Youth, we're going to be holding a prescription drug takeback at the police department on March 19, between 12:00 PM and 3:00 PM. If you remember, back in 2015, we started this program where we put a receptacle in the lobby of the police department to collect unwanted or unused prescription medication. This will be the five-year anniversary for that program, so we're going to have a special event. Anybody that has any unwanted prescriptions that they'd like to get rid of and dispose of properly in a safe manner, we'd be glad to have them bring that down between 12:00 and 3:00 on Tuesday. If not, the receptacle is in the lobby to be used anytime. But this is just a picture of what we recovered out of one empty of the receptacle there. In the last five years, we have collected and disposed of over 3,500 pounds of unused prescription medications. So, it's a very good program. Our citizens are using it, and it's a good thing to properly dispose of this medication in a proper manner. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Bishop?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We're now at a consent agenda. Any items council like to pull off for separate discussion?
May I be approved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now to zoning. Public hearing held to consider application Z-19-02 filed by Kamatsu Mining. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Bonds. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 16.10 acres from single-family and heavy commercial to heavy industrial, located west of South High Street and north of Dixie Street. The applicant is requesting the rezone in order to expand Kamatsu. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any speakers on this issue? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Ms. Choi. We have another one. Public hearing for PD-19-01 filed by Johnson Pace.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to revise a site plan for PD-18-03 to allow for self-storage mini warehouse. This development is located at the southwest intersection of Spring Hill Road and McCann Road. You've seen this application before. The original site plan showed five self-storage mini warehouse buildings with an office building totaling 72,000 square feet, with 52,000 square feet of air-conditioned space and 20,000 un-air-conditioned space. The new plan that they've proposed shows two buildings, each 50,000 square feet totaling 100,000 square feet in area. The building will be split-level two-story, and both buildings will be air-conditioned, unlike the previous plan that showed un-air-conditioned space with garage doors. Because of the security needs that have changed due to it being all air-conditioned space, they're requesting on this plan to remove the wrought iron fence that was proposed along McCann Road. If they do go in and decide to install a fence, it will be required that it be masonry and wrought iron. All conditions on the proposed plan development will remain the same, including no outside storage of vehicles, trailers, anything similar in nature. The buildings will have a minimum setback of 30 feet, 10 off the rear, which is the same from the previous plans. The buildings will be metal buildings with metal roofs. However, the buildings will be partially clad with masonry veneer and synthetic plaster veneer panels, which kind of look like stucco. They have adjusted the landscape plan a little to add two trees, and also to preserve a little bit more trees to the northern property, which is actually to the right-hand side of this plan. They have scaled back on some of the shrubs, but like I said before, they did preserve more trees on this site. Planning and zoning commission did recommend approval of this request. At first, they actually denied it, but they came back, and it was approved by Planning and Zoning Commission. and Zoning Commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. I've got a couple of questions or comments. This is on a fairly main entrance. I don't know if you'd call it into the city, but, I mean, there's a lot of traffic through that area. And, well, that fence was there originally to keep people out of there because of the open storage or the open garage doors or overhead doors. It was also there for appearances, to make that look better. And, I mean, if it wasn't just about appearances, we could have put up any kind of fence we wanted to, not necessarily a wrought iron fence. And I'm not so convinced that that fence along that area for two reasons: for safety and for appearance, isn't still needed. It's been pointed out to me that somebody could go in there at night to put something in storage and, you know, I suppose it was somebody's wife, some lady, somebody could follow them in there. I mean, that is a little bit of a concern. But I think just for protection and for appearances, I'm not so convinced that fence isn't still needed.
And the applicant's here to answer that question, if you would like for him to come up?
Sure.
Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counselor. My name's Jeff Hamilton with Johnson &amp; Pace Engineering here in Longview. Address is 1201 Northwest Loop 281. So, Mr. Wright, I appreciate your question. And to go back in time just a little bit for what the current zoning is with the original PD that we had approved, the reason the fence was there was because of the nature... The security that was needed for the type of storage that was being proposed. And at that time, it was the non-conditioned, non-climate-controlled storage spaces that were accessible from the exterior of the building, that we needed to have a security fence around the perimeter, the entire perimeter of the property. And we knew that if we were going to put a security fence up, especially along McCann Road and, like you say, along an entry corridor, it needed to be something that was attractive. So the fence was functional in that we needed it for security, and we also understood that we couldn't put up just any old fence. We couldn't have chain link. We couldn't have a board fence or anything like that. It needed to be something that was attractive and enhanced the aesthetics of the project. So that's why we put into the package that the fence that would be along McCann Road would be wrought iron with columns. And then we had the enhanced landscape with that fence as well. The reason we're coming back is just after they did their market study and realized the non-conditioned space wasn't really what the market was looking for. They were looking for full climate-controlled space. The security, as far as perimeter fencing, was no longer needed. This site, and I have my client here, the owner of the facility here as well, it's a smart access facility. There's not any other facilities like that in this area where it's 100% locked down. It's 100% controlled. And I may need him to come up here to talk in more specific detail. But you can access with your phone. When you approach the door, you can have your app with the location accuracy on where it knows you're at the door, and it'll say, "Hey, I noticed you're here. Do you want to come in?" Well, yes, push the button. Door's open for you and you only, kind of thing. So it's a very, very high-tech storage facility, and it's actually very secure in and of itself in the way that it does operate. So that fence along McCann Road would truly become just a fence running along the right-of-way. It doesn't connect to anything to the south or to the north. It was really just a piece of fence along the road. And granted, to your point, it was an aesthetic with the current zoning that we have and with the previous plan that we had. But at this time, we've... And we spoke with... And I'm sorry, we spoke with BTH Bank, members there, just to get their feel since their customers and, of course, everybody that works there look at that every day and have to drive past it every day. And we actually have letters of support from them, which I can share with you if you haven't seen the letter, whether in favor of us moving forward with this plan and in favor of us actually removing that fence. They say from an aesthetics, they're not looking for a fence like that. That way, our side of the road matches their side of the road because the landscaping that we're planning is actually designed to match what they have, same type of plants, trees, shrubs, and just so that you'll have more of a corridor feel as you're driving through there. Excuse me. On the north side of the site, that was an area that with the current zoning, we were able to take out all the trees because we were anticipating having stormwater detention in that area. That was early on when we were looking at zoning. When we got into engineering and actually got permits for the site, we were able to demonstrate that stormwater detention wasn't needed, wasn't necessary. So we are, with this plan, agreeing to encumber that area with a tree preservation area so that we don't touch those trees. And the blank space between the northern building and that tree preservation area is where we're proposing to put more of a landscape buffer so that you truly shield the view of that building from cars as they're driving by. Sorry, that's a lot of extra stuff when you just ask for a fence.
Well, now, on the south side of the buildings, those are going to be two-story buildings now, correct? Or like one and a half? So is that the south side right there, or is it...
Yes, sir. You're looking at the south side. So this is kind of... Think of it as a walkout basement-type construction. So it is a two-story building. When you're looking from the north, it's a two-story structure. You'll see the... Basically, there, you'll see the 20-foot height on it. From the south side, it looks more like a one-story building.
So what are those walls right there, the 20-foot walls? Those metal buildings or...
Those are a mixture of stucco and metal panel and rock veneer, masonry veneer.
So will it be like the first half of it will be the veneer, and then it'll be steel above that, or...
It is a mixture. Just the... So the southern building, the one that has the tower on it and the office, that building is currently permitted and under construction. So what we're asking is just to duplicate that building. Excuse me. To duplicate that building again. So as far as permitting and the material of the building, there is a full set of plans that have been submitted to the building department and reviewed and permitted. That's what's under construction right now.
Good. Any other questions?
Well, I've got a comment on this. We changed in midstream on P&amp;Z from the fence to take the fence out. I do believe it is a security issue. If you look at where you live at, Mayor, think about how many times people follow somebody in that gate. Numerous times. And especially in the evenings, somebody can pull up in there, get between them buildings, and wait for somebody to pull up. It's eight or nine o'clock at night when it's dark, they can come on in. You know, there's nothing stopping you. You've got two entrances, one way in and one... Both in and out. I don't really think how much landscaping you put up there is going to stop somebody that's determined to follow a woman in there at nighttime, whether she's going in there to pick up clothes or boxes or whatever and laying in waiting. I mean, that's a concern I've got is for a citizen that's going to use this building. It's not that it's not high-tech. It's not that it's not aesthetically pleasing. It is. The landscaping's great, but that's not my concern. My concern is what's going to happen to somebody if something happens there. And that's what I think of. I think of the protection of the citizens of this town. I'm not thinking of saving money. I'm not thinking of, you know, being climate or unclimate. You know, they're all over town like that as far as being unclimatized. They don't have fences around them and everything. I understand that. But I don't know. I'd have a tough time, my wife going in there in the evenings like that. It just bothers me. I'm sorry.
And I do appreciate that.
I'm sure, and I don't know, I haven't seen the full plan, but I'm assuming this will be well-lit as necessary. I'm sure there'll be security things there. But in reality, a fence only prevents someone from driving in. It doesn't prevent someone from getting in because they can crawl over a fence. So, I mean, that's not going to keep somebody from getting in there if they want to get in there. So, I mean, are we trying to determine if this is a safety issue or is this an aesthetic issue? Because if it's a safety issue, we're never going to... Criminal wants to get in, criminal's going to get in. That's what they do. They'll find a way. Car, bicycle, skateboard, whatever. So are we trying to determine is this aesthetic or is this functional? Because you're not going to prevent... I mean, the safety is safety. I mean, it's something that you have to realize when you go to a facility like that. If you go at... For dark, it's going to be dark. And we're not... We can't put restrictions on every business in town to make sure every parking lot is safe. If so, no one's going to build in our community. That's a concern of mine. But if it's an aesthetic issue and we feel like that was... It was there for an aesthetic reason, and you want to discuss that, then we can discuss it. But I don't know how else you're going to reconcile this.
Well, you know, safety-wise, I guess there weren't going to be... If you put up a fence, there's not going to be any gates on there anyway. Is that correct?
Not with this layout, no, sir. So the previous layout, because it was a security issue for the development itself, we had a perimeter fence and we had gates to the access. But now, because security not being an issue for the buildings and we have the tech in place for the safety of the clients that use those buildings, we were requesting permission to not build that fence.
Is there going to be... Is there going to be vehicle storage there, too?
No, sir.
Okay. Just those two buildings and...
Yes, sir. Just those two buildings, which that southern building is currently permitted and under construction right now. Access to the buildings is one entrance in the middle of the building. There's two emergency exits, one on each side per floor. And to speak to the security issue or the safety issue of it, and since you mentioned it, there are other climate-controlled storage facilities here in town that don't have fences all the way around them. So this... We're not asking to do something here that's different from anywhere else as far as fencing is concerned. And I do apologize. I thought we had done our due diligence on the fencing and really from the aesthetics perspective of it, making sure that we spoke with our neighbors and that we're trying to be a good neighbor to those across the street from us. And we have their support. We have letters from them that they've written and trying to keep the area looking nice as far as those folks who drive down McCann Road and pass through the area. But I stand before you tonight just asking for permission to move forward with an approved plan here and certainly to do what I can to satisfy your concerns on this zoning request.
Well, just one comment. You know, a lot of the stuff that comes before us in P&amp;Z is pretty cut and dried, and it's not that big of an issue. On something like this, which could be a big issue, I think it... Or at least some issues are involved, I think it wouldn't hurt to contact the city council rep from that district and talk to them about what you're trying to do. I did talk with Michael about it, but I couldn't... If I'd known a little more, it might have helped.
I do apologize for not being able to connect.
Anyway.
Any other questions or comments while the public hearing is open? Public hearing is now closed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. And thank you for your concerns, counsel. I think it's great that we can discuss things and we can come to terms on things that are important to our citizens. It's nice that citizens see what we're thinking, not just that we all vote yes or all vote no. It's nice to say your piece and be comfortable and make your vote. And I think that's how this council is supposed to function. So thank you all for your comments on that, and thank you for your comments as well, sir. We're now at a discussion item, discuss the Longview Arboretum and Nature Center. Mr. Karen.
Good evening. We want to come to you this evening to talk about the timeline and update the progress of the overall development of the arboretum. We also want to discuss the project and overall funding because that's kind of one of these issues that comes about. And we want to make sure that everybody has as clear of understanding of how this project needs to get to its conclusion or what phase we're in and where we are. So in 2013, a detailed conceptual plan was identified as a multi-phase development. And so that's what you see before you on the screen. So MOD-COB would be to the left, and this is the 26-acre site that would have a number of phases, including formal garden areas, trails, ponds, restoration areas, as well as a building. So after 2013, a group was re-energized. And in 2015, the Longview Arboretum and Nature Center was formed, and they hired MHS to design the actual arboretum. So the picture on the right is the 26-acre site. And as the process went forward, the real focus was on the area in the yellow on the left. The area in the yellow is the seven-acre site that is currently under construction right now. So from the planning standpoint, the area in yellow had trails, a pond, and formal gardens. So with this vision that was created from 2013 and then enhanced in 2015, the LANC, so the LANCE or the Board, again, there are a lot of words that we use, and I use them sometimes interchangeably, so I apologize for that. So if I say Board, I mean the formal group that has been working on fundraising and operating the arboretum itself. So the LANCE or the Board, that's how I refer to them. So I'm apologizing sometimes. You may need to clarify with what I say there. So they had their mission to go forth and fundraise to develop the seven-acre site initially with phases two and three along the way.
So the seven-acre site is phase one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So in 2016, January, we applied for Texas Parks and Wildlife grant. We received... Noticed that we received that grant in May of 2016. And so that grant included two bridges, three bench stations, and about 4,000 feet of trail. And that's the picture of what we submitted, and that's what was included in this grant. So it's a $200,000 grant from the state and $50,000 matched from the City of Longview. Then in 2017, we came forward to city council with an agreement for the design, construction, and development of the arboretum itself. So the Board, LANCE, came forward, along with city staff, and said, "All right, we're getting pretty close to being able to build this arboretum. We need a little bit of guidance as to who's doing what and how the funding is going to come through." So we developed this agreement, whereas the city maintains the park site. Again, I refer to the 26 acres or the seven acres that's under development as the park, okay? And that's good reference for later on when I talk about things. So the park itself, they came forward with a plan. And in this agreement included the estimate of $1.56 million project. That $1.56 million project in the agreement was the city would continue with bidding the project when there was $1.1 million in funding readily available to the project from the Board itself, so from LANCE.
And the original agreement just included that 26 acres?
Yes, sir. So then, in May of 2017, the LANCE or the Board purchased the 706 Cotton Street property. So as you can see on the picture on the left-hand side there, there's this big arrow pointing up to the 706 property. So in that circle is a building. In the original, again, going back to the 2013 conceptual plan, there was always a building at some phase at a later date to have a building, a visitor center, education center, whatever you want to have at that facility. So when the opportunity came available for someone to purchase the property on Cotton Street, the Board decided that instead of having a building on the 26 acres, that it could expand the footprint and accelerate having a building as part of the arboretum overall with the main entry at 706 Cotton Street. Everybody with me so far? All right. So from there, oops. We came up with an actual... Some May 2017, so then in February 2018, we came up with the operating agreement. And the reason we came forward with... Before we went to construction on this is because, again, the operations would impact the city's budget as well as identify the funding, continual funding that the LANCE or the Board would need to have in order to be able to have this be a viable project moving forward. And we wanted to ensure sustainability. Our concern was that, look, we don't want... We can't just build something if we can't maintain it. That's something that I don't think the city... That's, that's something that I don't think the city council was interested in, and I don't think it was something that the board or the LANCE was interested in. We want to make sure that we're gonna build something that's beautiful, that people are gonna come to, and it's gonna be able to be maintained in that same way. So that's why we came forward in February 2018. And again, this talks specifically about two separate properties, but specifically on this, it was about the city-owned property only, again, the 26 acres or the seven acres that was under construction. It clearly identified what the, the board or the LANCE was responsible for and what the city was responsible for. Essentially, what the city said was, "We're gonna continue, we're gonna operate parks like we always have. We're gonna mow, we're gonna clean trails, we'll clean bathrooms, do those kind of things. We're good at that. We're used to doing those types of things." Formal landscape and bedding plants and those kind of things, we're not quite as good and qualified and don't have the staff or capacity to be able to do those. That responsibility would have to be on the LANCE or the board to be able to reimburse the city for what we identified as two full-time positions, a horticultural position as well as a maintenance person. Those essentially would be onsite, 365, recognizing that certain parts of the year, they'll be able to work on other city projects, but primarily focused on the arboretum property So in April of 2018, city council awarded a contract for a little over $2 million. At the same time, a 400, or a $500,000 change order was approved as well, to decrease the total project by which that decrease included removing all the formal gardens and the plant areas and altering the scope. So the overall construction that was awarded was $1.532 million, of which the funding, LANCE or the board wrote a check to the city for $360,000. We had other government funding in place, including that grant that we talked about, LeadCo, the matching portion from the city, as well as the SRA. And then also, to complete the $1.5 million, there was, we received an irrevocable line of credit, credit from the LANCE as a guarantee for the funding of the $1.5 million. We decreased the scope, and it's a little hard to see, and I apologize for that, we decreased the scope to be able to get all of the infrastructure in place, recognizing that change orders could be added to the project to add in the formal gardens areas, to add in the areas that we didn't have to have to, that were obligated from the grant. Again, we received the grant, so we have to put the trail part in. So we took a look at the areas that we actually had to do, we had funded for, and we knew that we could add in things later on. It's kind of hard to add in a pond after you've constructed all these trails. It's kind of hard to add in different areas once you have some, certain things. Once the trails are in, it's hard to put the electrical or the water or the irrigation back in. It can be done, it's just more costly. So again, we tried to emphasize on the initial construction contract of putting the infrastructure in place, recognizing that the LANCE or the board would continue to fundraise and come forward to city council for an approval of a change order to add back in thing, elements that they had fundraised for. So again, it's, it's a little bit hard to see on this drawing because it's a, it's a line drawing, but this is the actual site plan that is currently being used for the construction documents. The, the areas in the middle of the map that you see kind of hashed, those are the formal garden areas. So again, all the, all the areas are designed, but the plants were actually removed out of the project at the very beginning. Then in October, we came forward with a, a change order to put in some moss boulders, some ledge rock, and again, the, the LANCE or the board provided a check to the city for $93,000. After that, November of 2018, voters approved Proposition C, which included $1.5 million for the arboretum. So here we are, trying to figure out exactly how to utilize those dollars and to bring this project to completion. And so that's what, what we're here to discuss, and I can, I can answer any questions. I'll go over a couple of the items that are remaining, a couple of pictures, but feel free to stop me as, as we go along. So I'm about, I got some more information to provide to you, hopefully to fill in some of the gaps of the questions that you may have. Essentially, remaining outstanding items that are unfunded, if you will, or there is not actual cash in the bank to complete. The purchase of the 706 Cotton Street property has appraisal value of $675,000. That is owned by the LANCE. That is the building and the property. It's about three acres of land on that site. That $675 does not include any of the improvements to the interior, exterior of that building or the land itself. It is simply for the purchase of that property. The line of credit, the irrevocable line of credit for $800,000 that would, that is required to complete the current construction of the $1.5 million, phase one, seven acres, needs to be funded. The original design of the plants, and I'll talk a little bit about that. So here are the formal garden areas. There are 15 different garden areas that were originally included, and when I say originally, this is back prior to it being bid. This is going back to the original MHS drawing of 2015. So there are 15 different landscape areas. When we got to construction, or when we got into budgeting to figure out how much money would be required, beds five, six, seven, 11, and 12 were not included in, the plants for them were not included in the bid. The other plants were. So when I say original design of plants in the restroom, again, restroom was an item that was in the original bid as an alternate, okay? So when I say original, so this 705, for the original cost and size of the plants, is for all of those garden areas except five, six, seven, 11, and 12.
This is the seven acres, not the whole 26?
That is correct. This is just the seven acres. Actually, let me correct myself. This does include 11 and 12. I'm sorry. This does include 11 and 12. 11 and 12 was added back in because the, the board received an additional donation for the cost of putting that, those plants into the project. Another option, which is reduced plant sizes, which the, the board was prepared to come forward with a line of credit or cash, or a check to the city to put in was $391,000. That $391 would, would cover all of the plants except for five, six, and seven, but it had reduced size. So when I say reduced size, instead of a three-inch caliper tree, it would be a two-inch. Instead of a four-inch, it would be three-inch. And you'd be amazed at the amount of money that you can save by going down one-inch caliper. Again, the thought on that was, plants are gonna grow, so it's better to get something in the ground rather than nothing at all. May take a little bit more time, may not look as fulfilled, but plants are gonna be in the ground. So the last item on there is the site improvements at 706 Cotton Street. Again, this is the exterior improvements that were originally bid as Schedule A when we went out in April of 2018. So in April of 2018, we went out with a bid package. We had the seven-acre site. We had then Schedule A, which was this site as well. So that $857,000 would complete the exterior of the 706 Cotton Street property. So those are, those are the, the main items that we've identified that we do not have cash for, if you will, to complete the project. So what we've come up with, again, and there are many other options that we could come out with, what we came up with are four separate options. So option one would be to purchase the, the 706 Cotton Street property.
Mr. Karen.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
You're talking about, these are the four options that staff has come up with for us to utilize the $1.5 million allocated by the bond proposal passed by the citizens of Longview?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, so these are your options for the spending of that money passed in the bond?
That is correct.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Sorry for that. So option one would use all of the bond funds on the 706 Cotton Street property. That would purchase the building, the property, and it would do the exterior improvements. It would not improve, make improvements to the interior of the building or the building itself. It would simply be for the improved, for the purchase, as well as those, that $850,000 project that, that we had, that I showed up on, on the plan. Option two, the city would own the building and the property at 706 Cotton Street, and the remainder of the funds would be used as a replacement for the line of credit. So again, using whole numbers, $700,000 for the bill, purchase of the building and property. The $800,000 remaining would say the line of credit is, is no longer necessarily, necessarily. So remaining, if that were to occur, the park would not have any plants, and the city would own the building that needs to be renovated on its interior and, and on the exterior.
Scott, option one, we would have the choice of either improving the site development or renovations to the interior, correct? One or the other, or a combination thereof with that money?
Yes. So with option one, the park would still not have any plants. If the city does purchase that property, we have formally bid the exterior improvements that are out there. But if the city acquires that, that, that building, because of the dollar amount associated with it, we would have to do formal bid documents and bid that out publicly. So that would cause a delay of approximately six months, probably, maybe four months on...
To do the interior work?
Yes, sir. Because again, it's a publicly, publicly owned facility now. It's not a private facility. Again, the, the construction process for, for doing something publicly is, is different than it is privately. There's time, more time involved, and we need to do, it's a public works project, so it has to be formally bid.
Okay. Thank you.
So option three, the bond funds would be solely used on the park or the current construction site. Again, all of the funds would be, be done there. The city would not purchase the Cotton Street property or make any improvements thereof, and the park would still, the park would have plants and be complete. So option three is that seven acres, okay, we would put in all the plants and the, the line of credit would go away. The seven acres would be complete, but the city would not own the 706 Cotton Street property. That would still be owned by the LANCE.
So, Mr. Karen, the line of credit, the irrevocable line of credit is to be used to buy plants and that kind of thing. What's it being used for?
No. So currently, cash, again, trying to, in my terms, is we have the cash in the bank of the $455,000 that has been provided, again, to, in due city funds, and we have $420,000. We have $800, $875,000 in cash that we, we have drawn down for construction of the current site. When we get to the point where we're at 870, 880, or wherever we are, and we don't have that cash, we're gonna call on that line of credit to complete what was originally bid. What was originally bid does not include any plants.
So is that line of credit, is that the city's line of credit?
No. It's not ours.
It is not ours.
Okay.
It is the, the LANCE.
But it can be used to...
It is callable, yes.
Okay.
By the city of Longview. It is assigned to the city of Longview.
Okay. Mr. White?
Yes, sir. Who currently owns 706 Cotton Street?
The LANCE, the board itself.
Okay. If this line of credit is used, and we purchase this building, does that line of credit have to be paid off? And do we assume that debt?
The city does not assume that debt.
They're separate, though. So the line of credit is separate from the building. So there is a mortgage on the building that the arboretum has now, but the line of credit is totally separate from that. That's in phase one for them.
So the only, let me make sure I understand what's happening. The only thing that the city is responsible for moving forward would be the money, as Andy said, or the money that we don't have, that's within the bond, the 1.5. Nothing additional past that, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That's all we're talking about. And I'm, well, go ahead and talk about options.
Go ahead and finish your options, then we'll, then we'll discuss.
Sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Karen.
So option four, the park would have no, would have plants, and again, this is just trying to figure out a way to spend $1.5 million. You wouldn't think it'd be that hard. Sometimes it's a challenge. So the original part, the plans that were designed, and you know what, phase two, three, four, sometime down the road, if you looked back at that 26-acre site, there are additional trails and areas that, that the park would go into. So in option four, we would complete all the plants, put in all the plants in the bill, in the, in the seven acres, as well as build additional trails outside of that seven acres. The LANCE would still be responsible for their building and own that building in 706 Cotton Street, and they would still be required to pay, or the line of credit would still exist, callable by the city to complete the current construction.
Counsel, before we move forward, Mr. Metzler, is this where you would like to talk, or is this, are you...
It'd be great.
Okay. Because he had a speaker card. You still just get your three minutes, okay? Just so you know.
My name is, my name is Bob Metzler. I live at 255 Waters Edge, Longview, and I'm president of the Longview Arboretum and The first thing I want to make clear is that the, the bids we received for landscaping around the building, those bids were for us. That was never intentioned to be money spent by the city. We wanted to know, when we bought the building, what would it cost us to landscape around the building? So we never had any intentions of the city doing that. And they came in, quite frankly, about twice what we thought they should, and we were going to step back, change up those, that design, and put it in at a, at a cost that we thought we could afford. So I don't know which, which option that is up there. It's part of option one, purchase 706 Cotton Street and construct site improvements. Site improvements, we never intended for the city to do that, either pre or post-bond. It was never brought up. Option two is the one that, that I would recommend the city consider, because, and I would, I would rather say than release the irrevocable line of credit, that line of credit is actually backed up by an $800,000 note at Texas Bank of Trust that LANCE has. If we don't do anything to pay that, not pay it off, we hadn't borrowed any money yet, but to release that possible indebtedness, and if that $800,000, if you were to do one of the other options, three or four, spend that money elsewhere and not in finishing the work that's currently underway, okay? What we're hoping to do with, with the bond money was to purchase the building, do $250,000 worth of remodeling work inside the building, which we have actually started, and finish the gardens. We have given the city, what, 800?
About 875,000?
455,000, so we've received in cash.
No, we just gave it today, 394,000 line of credit.
It was, again, it's a line of credit, it is not cash. It is not a check.
Well, our city manager told us we could use that line of credit, so we have given a, either in cash or line of credits, over $800,000. Now, we can go write a check for that line of credit and, and actually put $800,000 toward the construction of the park. In fact, our total of capital budget...
Mr. Metzler, your three minutes is up, so I'll give you just, I'll extend it just a second, but you have to wrap it up, okay?
Okay. Our capital, but total capital budget was 2.8 million. The bond is one and a half million. You do the math, and you can see we've already put 1.3 million in the park. We've had some very generous donations. That's why we're trying to finish out the gardens. I'm not sure I'm allowed to tell you who they were, but some very large donations. One family gave around $400,000, a very prominent family in, in the city. And they, they bought what we call Garden 12. We didn't have the money at the time as... We didn't have the money at the time, as Scott mentioned, we didn't have the money at the time to build those gardens out. But since we started construction, that's when the money really started coming in. People could see it was really going to happen. So that's where we're at.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
If it's okay, I'd really like to go first.
Okay. Please, Mrs. Shihara.
I think, well, I just think it's really important to remember, like Andy said, yeah, sorry, Bob, you can sit down. I'm just talking now.
I can sit?
Yes.
That the money we're talking about is the bond election money. So we have direction on how that's supposed to be spent, in my opinion. And so all along the way, even though the actual election says pretty vaguely, you know, 1.5 for the Arboretum, really the resolution said, what, 27 for Parks? It doesn't, you know, we don't have that outlined specifically, but I can tell you how it was considered and how it was marketed. At CPAC, what we considered and discussed was buying the building and completing the interior renovations. I mean, that's what CPAC was recommending when they recommended to council that that be included. And then I personally included that in every communication that I made to anybody about the bond, that that's what would be done with the bond money as far as the 1.5 for the Arboretum. So could we set up here and change it? Sounds like I think we could, but should we? No. I mean, that's, so of the options that are up here, I think that the three and four are not for us to even, well, this is me personally, should not be considered. And I think that with the bond money, what I feel like I have personally promised the voters, as well as the rest of us, is that we will be purchasing the building for the city to own and completing the interior renovations. And if there are additional funds after that, we can figure out where that goes. But that's, I just feel very strongly in being transparent about how bond money was represented to voters, received, and then how we need to spend it. It's, it's not even necessarily appropriate for us to be debating back and forth what the Arboretum Board wants us to spend it on, what we want to spend it on. That, I feel like that's already been decided in, in many ways.
And, thank you. And I believe that it helps to clarify exactly what the, you know, your intent as part of the CPAC committee and, and what was, was out there. The, the only comment that I'll make on that is that interior, once the building is city property, then it, we have to do the bidding requirements. And so that, I think that's where some of the challenges became of, okay, how, you know, how much is that going to cost if we don't have the building, you know? So those are, I think, where some of the confusion, you know, lied is exactly who was directing the interior improvements? How was that done? Again, the Arboretum, Lance has done a fantastic job of raising money, doing everything, and designing building, and coming up with plans, and it's all wonderful. The, the difference is, once the city purchases that property, we have to bid that out. So that, as, as I've, I've mentioned to them, if they make improvements to that building prior to the city purchasing it, we would either need to have receipts or some means to be able to present to the public that we purchased an improved building and here, and why are the, what those costs are. We have an appraisal for 675. So if improvements were made to that building interior prior to the city purchasing it, sure, we could get a new appraisal that may appraise it at a higher rate and value to, for that purchase and, and those improvements. So that, that to me is where it's some of the, again, if, if, once we purchase it, then we need to bid that project out. And we'll work with the, the board to determine what that project is and how much money to spend on it and what that is.
Is there an ongoing note right now on this property?
Yes.
On, on the 706 prop-
Okay. How much is that costing us a month? Or how much is that costing the, how much is it costing the Longview Arboretum a month?
I don't know what the, the note costs are monthly.
The monthly note costs?
I know there's been deferred payments, but-
Yeah, we, we, we paid $600,000 for the building. We, we put up $50,000 down payment. We paid, is this coming across? We paid $650,000 for the building. We put up $50,000 down payment, and we have since made payments that brought that principal down to 579.
But what is, what are you paying a month for interest on this?
What's the month?
The monthly payments, I believe, $4,200 a month.
How much?
Forty-two hundred. Is that right?
So you've paid $48,000 in interest in a year?
Well, probably, easily.
And that money came from where?
A million dollars.
It came from our donations.
Mr. White?
My first thought was on, on the 706 property, but more so importantly, option three and four, does that get the community into the park quicker? Are we able to have access to it and use it quicker if we go at option three and four? Not any quicker?
No, I, I don't think, the only, because again, the, the 1.5, the, the current construction is going to be completed in, in the next few months. So the purchase wouldn't delay anything. The intent is any of those improvements that the, the Lance Board is making, any exterior improvements would correspond with the, the opening of the, the whole facility as a whole. The only delay that, that, that I would foresee is if the city purchases the building, we would need to then go out to bid on any improvements to, to the building itself. So, but the park itself, the park side, could be accessed. Now, that would be a decision for council and, and the board to, to move forward. You open up a facility that doesn't have a true visitor center or those kind of things.
Second part, then, for option one or two, the city purchases the building, what city staff will be actually housed there?
None. We would actually lease back the building to the board itself.
May, may I interject something here?
Yeah.
We, we've talked to the city manager about the sale and lease of the property. And there's some stipulations we want to see in the, in the, in the sales agreement, like it will never be used for anything except an arboretum office or the gateway into the Arboretum. And two, that we would lease, you would lease the building to us at some term and there's certain conditions. And any improvements we wanted to make to the building would be leasehold improvements that don't have to go through a city engineering bidding curriculum, because they're leasehold improvements, not improvements that the city is paying for, we're paying for them.
Okay. So let me, let me make a statement here. These options are just options that staff has just come up.
Yes, ma'am.
There's no options, none of those options are going to be the option. I mean, that's just not possible, because there's too many variables here. So let me, let me clarify, if I may, and then if you all have questions, we'll continue forward. The, the original seven acres of the Arboretum is going to be completed irregardless of this discussion, correct?
Yes, sir.
Because the funding by the city is there, the funding by the Lance is there.
Yes, sir.
Correct? We're not discussing that, right? That's not something we're discussing, because we, we, that's already been discussed at our prior meetings, and we've already voted on that. And we've already agreed to that concept. So that concept is, is done. What we're discussing is what we're going to do with the million and a half dollars that we have from the community to add to what's already been discussed and voted on, okay? So if, if we decide we want to buy a building, which, and I'm, I don't, I'm not, I'm not one way or the other, I don't know why we want the building. I don't know what the advantage of the buildings are. I don't know those things. And I'm not, I'm not saying we didn't, Kristen knows more about this, because she was involved in this very intricately with the Arboretum and the CPAC committee. And so if she says that's how we, that's how we promoted this, then I yield to that. And I'll say, if that's how we promoted it, then that's how we promoted it. And that's what we, in my opinion, are obligated to do. Whether, you know, whether I like that or not, that doesn't matter. I'm, I'm one vote that voted for this bond proposal, and so I want to see the money spent the way it was told to be spent. So if that's what we decided, then that's what we decided. There will be additional monies left over from that, because if you just purchased the building, and I'm assuming, I, this is an assumption, I'm assuming if you purchase the building, we're going to purchase it for what's left on the note, not, I don't think any bond money that was voted on by the citizens can be used to pay back an organization that already owns something. I don't think that's how bond money is spent, in my opinion. So if we're buying the building, we're buying it at what's left on the building. And, and, and that be that. And then whatever we have left, then we decide how we spend that on the remainder of the park. But I don't think there's any other way to, to slice this and maintain what we promised the voters in these meetings that we attended and, and sat up here and told them we'd spend that money the way they want to spend it. Am I, am I incorrect on this?
No, I agree.
Well said.
You know, I, for every bond election that I've been involved with, there's something called a contract with the voters. And are we legally obligated contractually to use these funds to buy a building, to renovate a building, to build trails, to even spend it at the Arboretum? No. Is there a moral, ethical obligation that what we told the voters we would do, that we'd do? Yes. I, I, I think we all agree with that.
Which is why we sit here on these, up here as elected officials.
And I, I think what staff is looking for is some direction from us on where to proceed first with allocating and spending the 1.5 million that we told the voters was going to go toward the Arboretum. They need some direction, and they need it now.
Well, I think we've, I think we've given you some direction, Scott.
Before we, can I say something here? And this may put Mr. Karen on the spot just a little bit. But here's my understanding of 706 Cotton Street. If we don't buy it, we've got a million and a half dollars we can put into the park. We do not currently own 706 Cotton Street. Now, maybe we did, I don't know. I don't think the majority of the city feels like they voted on this bond thinking that we were going to buy 706 Cotton Street. I may be wrong, but I don't believe that. My understanding is that when 706 Cotton Street was purchased, city staff advised LANC, or whatever, L A N C, not to purchase it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that we were not interested in having office space in that building.
That's correct.
So, and they decided to buy it on their own. To me, if they decided to buy it on their own and they were advised by city staff not to buy it, I don't really feel like it's our obligation to go out and buy it when we could take that million and a half dollars and put it into city property and, and build something for the city.
No city staff member ever told us not to buy that building, period. That was never brought up to anybody on the Longview Arboretum.
That's not what I'm told.
I'm sorry, but that's not-
I, I, I'll take full responsibility. At, at a board meeting, when it was brought up, I said I would not recommend purchasing that building. Absolutely. That was me.
Okay. So, good discussion, counsel. And I think we're going to be hearing from our constituents this week, which is the whole purpose of having a discussion item, so that we can present information and we can then gain information from people that we are going to be responsible for. So what I want to do is I want us to take this and we will, we will, as a discussion item, we have discussed it. Now we will direct city staff to give us some other options as you have seen us in, in what we've discussed tonight. And then we will be in touch with our, with our constituents and we will bring those forward. Absolutely, please.
So I think I agreed with what Mayor Mack said about the purchase of the building being limited to what actually is needed to pay off. I do think in being transparent, we need to be careful about making payments to nonprofits that are organized with individuals over those boards, because if we're giving additional funds, that's, that doesn't, that's not transparent to me. And in the same way, in making renovations, I understand the argument that if a private entity does it, they don't have to go through our same bid processes, they're probably going to get things cheaper. I get it. But what we're talking about is public funds, and we have to administer it according to those public rules. So I would be of the opinion, and everybody else can speak for themselves, that we purchased the building for the note and that we do the renovations, we bid that out, and we handle what we need to on doing the renovations. And then any additional funds left over is more of the discussion we're having about where does that go? Does that go into phase one to alleviate anything? Does that go to plans, that, whatever that happens? But those are my, that would be my priorities.
At our next discussion, which we will discuss this again, I mean, obviously we will, we, we're obligated to. I would like to have some specifics, Mr. Karen, on this building and what city staff thinks it will cost to renovate this building and where we, what we're spending our money on and what the purpose of it will be. Because if, if the purpose of this building is to be the visitor center or the entryway or whatever, whatever the Arboretum Board had, had in, in, in plans for this building, I want to know all that and I want to see that. Because at some point, if you're going to have a wonderful arboretum such as we're going to have, you have to have some form of an entry-
A building.
A facility, a something. And so I want to see what all this is going to look like, and I want to see what it's going to cost us, so we can then make an educated decision. Because, you know, we, I don't want to make uneducated decisions with all the facts in front of me. So I know you'll, you'll help us with that, and we, we will continue to move forward. And, and as well, let's don't be naive. Let's explore options such as, okay, if we have to renovate the building, it'll cost us X number of dollars, because we have to do it as a, as a public entity. If they renovate the building and then we buy it after they renovate it, is that better for us or is that, was that worse for us? Because then, then they're renovating it as a private entity, and then we can then purchase that and not have to go through the public process. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of ways that we can look at this and, and, and you spend our money the best way possible. So that's what I would like to see you do, and I know that, the, that you all will do your job.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pirtle, do you have another question? Comment?
I was always under the assumption we were going to use that money to buy the building.
And, and that, and if that is the, and so I want to, I want to have those options before us and see what we're, what we're dealing with.
On our city website, we have that indication on the city website, even.
Then, then, then we shall, we shall see what, what this portrays for us, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all for good, lively discussion and for everybody being involved in this. Very, very good, very good. Any other questions on this, on this topic? We shall move on. Renovate as a community interest. Mr. Moore?
Ms. Snotty?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Well, it has been great discussions tonight. I don't have pictures, so you'll just have to take my word for it. I did attend the ballet of Sleeping Beauty. It was amazing, where I was able to present Pat George Mitchell with a proclamation, and she was pleasantly surprised. Councilman Wade and I also had a community awareness event this past week where we were able to meet with citizens in the community and talk about some of the issues we're having along with our responsibilities as council. And just, the NAACP had their annual prayer breakfast, and it was amazing. I was at Divine Catering, and it was a sold-out event, so just wanted to make mention of that.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Oh, one other thing, I'm sorry. Just as an FYI, that we do, I know that discussion is over, but we should always err on the side of caution and make sure that we're doing what's right. If we say we're going to do something as a council, we should do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Nothing to mention tonight, other than I look forward to being at the Police Department Fireman Basketball Game on Saturday. Go Blue and Red.
Mrs. Shihara? Mr. Wright?
Well, the only thing I wanted to say was, Ms. Snotty, if you have something at Divine Catering, it's pretty easy to sell it out there.
Mr. Pirtle? Mr. Barnes? Okay. The Grassroots of the Green is returning on Friday, March 15th. The S. Sato event features artists, merchants, live music, food trucks, adult beverages, vendors, and, and free admission. For more information, visit keeplongviewbeautiful.org. Longview Transit is hosting an open house and public comment period on Monday, March 18th, between 11:30 and 1:00 p.m. at the Longview Transit Office located at 908 East Pacific Avenue. Stop by and give input on future route changes. Celebration of Longview Transit's 60th anniversary, all rides on transit will be free that day. Join the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center on Saturday, March 30th for the Strut Your Mutt One Mile Walk. Enjoy music, vendors, contests, and kids' activities for two or four-legged family members. Registration includes an event tee-shirt and dog bandana. Go to register, visit longviewtexas.gov/animals. Upcoming events? Come downtown on Saturday, March 16th for a St. Patrick's Day Block Party on Tyler Street between Old Horse Brewing and Silver Grizzly Espresso. Enjoy live music, green beer, and food trucks beginning at 5:00 p.m. On March 22nd, enjoy the spring weather with Food Truck Fridays from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Heritage Plaza. Longview Main Street will be, will share the spring downtown live schedule and some super cool downtown live swag. Sean wrote that. No doubt about it. No doubt about it. I did. He gets me every time. I'm, I'm past it when I get through with it.
United Way's Cooking at the Creek BBQ Cook-Off is 10 AM on Saturday, March 23 at Bear Creek Smokehouse. Sign up to compete or just enjoy watching all the fun. More information available at longviewunitedway.org. For more information on any of these events, please check out our calendar at visitlongviewtexas.com, or city events, visit longviewtexas.gov/calender. Okay. Survey. Y'all probably thought this was the stupidest question in the world, didn't you? I have a real reason for asking this question. Do you think all schools, including colleges, should have the same spring break on the state of Texas? Okay. 57% said yes, 43% said no. Here's why I ask that. Personally, I say yes. Only, well, take it back. For my business, I would say no, because it is so hard to get it all done in one week when I, for what I do. But I got to thinking about this from an economic standpoint. When you think of it economically, I know I had three children, and they all had, you know, age discrepancies, and some of them were in professional schools, some of them were in college, some of them were in high school. And spring break comes, and, you know, two of the three are the same, or one of the three are the same, or none of the three are the same. Well, it's hard to vacation or go someplace when they can't all go at the same time. And I'm thinking economically, if everyone was able to go at the same time, I think that would encourage people to travel more, to, you know, spend more money in other places, because you could. Because I know plenty of times, we couldn't go on spring break, or didn't go, because one didn't have it, or two did, or something did. So I just got to thinking about that, that it would be nice if we had the ability to all go at the same time, or not go at the same time, if you have families. I don't know. It's kind of a, I was thinking about this week, because it just, it just hit me. What do y'all think? How'd y'all vote? Yes or no? Yes? Okay.
I'm all for one.
I am too. It's, it, it should be nice. Okay. Yeah, I know. Okay, fun question. Did you remember to set your clocks forward for daylight savings time? Okay, that's pretty funny. 49% have said, of course. But it's cheating, because those dad gum iPhones and watches change automatically. If you take that off, that 42% would be on the nope column. I guarantee you, because that would be me. So it was good. I'm glad daylight savings time is here. I like the longer evenings, so when we get out of these meetings, it's not dark outside. So listen, I appreciate everybody being here tonight. Thanks for the discussion. Thank you for tuning in. And so if there's nothing else, we will be adjourned.